Welcome to the Simsbury Board of Selectmen meeting for February twenty-sixth. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the pledge.
I do not wish to apply in the United States of America and to turn your letter for which stands my nation, our government, and municipal with the liberty of justice for all.
Um, the first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for the proposed amendment to the town code, chapter one forty-one, article five, um, and it's about the tax abatement for volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to town code charter one forty-one, article five, the tax abatement for volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel. So move.
Second.
Thanks. Um, any discussion? I guess not. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open. Um, we have a sign up sheet for the public hearing and the first person I have on the sign up sheet sheet is Captain Jim James Baldus. Would like to come up and speak. Um, we try to limit you to three minutes for public hearing. If you can do that, that would be great.
I think I should be able to do that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll cut you off.
Uh, my name is Jim Baldus and I live at sixteen Deepwood Road. I am the chief of the department for the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company, which is the entire labor force that provides first responder fire and rescue services to the citizens of Simsbury. I'm here today to support the proposed changes to eliminate the tiered application of the tax abatement program that has been in place for many years through state statute, which allows towns to offer tax abatement to qualified volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance personnel. From its implementation over twenty years ago, Simsbury has been a leader in providing this financial recognition through abated tax in an effort to recognize the value that we place on volunteers, first responders, who literally are putting their lives on the line to help and protect citizens and property. Early on during its implementation, it was decided to apply the abatement in two stages. Two to five years at fifty percent of the abatement in five years and above for the full abatement. The intent was, at the time, to incentivize the retention of more volunteers into staying five years or longer. Over time, we have recognized that the requirements a volunteer must meet to qualify for the tax abatement no longer supports this retention concept and in fact can contribute to the questioning of personal value when one volunteer is getting the full abatement for performing the same level as another volunteer, who only difference is the length of service. The requirements that are set forth to qualify for the tax abatement are applied evenly to every volunteer firefighter. They are required to attend a minimum of thirty-two training drills out of the fifty offered each year for a minimum of one hundred hours, where many of our members do much, much more. In addition, our volunteer firefighters are required to respond to one out of four calls for service. For in two thousand twenty-three amounted to a minimum of ninety-five incidents, to which a value of two hours per incident is used considering the time to respond from work, home, or other activities, time at the call, and the time needed to return to that work, home, or other activities. Also keeping in mind that these responses are all at the expense of the firefighter, the volunteer who uses, who has to be responsible for their own vehicle, their gas, and their time. Limiting the time and allowing the full abatement to be applied to all volunteers who meet the requirements following one full calendar year of service will help to stabilize the application of this benefit and show our volunteers that we, the town of Simsbury, place a standard value on each volunteer who qualifies regardless of time served as they all perform the same qualified function. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the firefighters of the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company, of which we have members in the audience attending as well.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Okay, um, this, the next person I have that signed up for the public hearing is Jeffrey Giddings.
Evening. Uh, I'm Jeffrey Giddings. I'm the chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners for the Simsbury Fire District. I'm gonna read into the record a statement that was prepared by Gary Wilcox, who is the president of the fire district. Gary was just called away with a family medical emergency a few minutes ago, actually. Gary resides at nineteen Oakwood, by the way. He serves as the president of Simsbury Fire District, which is the administrative portion of the fire protection for Simsbury. Your district provides the funding for the fire district's trucks, firehouses, and equipment and that all the volunteer workforce uses to protect the citizens of Simsbury. The fire company has maintained for many years this volunteer force of roughly ninety active members. For many of our neighboring towns and even on a state and national level, the volunteer trend has been on a downward trajectory, while Simsbury has remained steady. We have many things to attribute this to. Uh, one is a district-run fire service. Another is a very hardworking corps of chiefs, officers, and dedicated members. We've also had, uh, very good support from the town of Simsbury in the past, and the residents certainly have also supported the fire company. So let's do a little simple math of what this means to the town as far as taxpayers. A paid or even a partially paid fire department would be an annual cost increase of multi-million dollars. What we're asking for is just an annual cost increase of thirteen thousand dollars. Our collective efforts in support of the present abatement program has been a critical part of keeping our successful volunteer department strong and able to protect this town. We are asking for continued support to improve the present program and to help us recruit new members and retain the present ones.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else here that's here for public audience? Joan?
Let's talk about the tax abatement.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Hearing.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's a hearing. Yes.
The town ordinance states, quote, "to encourage others to become firefighters and ambulance personnel." There are certain criteria that are required to obtain an abatement. All personnel salaried and volunteered in both volunteer associations can receive the abatement. Last year, the abatements for the fire department for seventy-eight people was a hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, two thousand, nine hundred twenty thousand, and the abatement for the ambulance personnel was twelve thousand for six people. Chairman Rob Pomeroy of the Board of Finance tasked Lisa Hevna to research the value of abatements. The minutes reflect the presentation of the report submitted by Lisa Hevna as a member of the Board of Finance, September seventeen, twenty nineteen, on the results of her research into the value of abatement. And she concluded that abatements as a tool are not effective and reduce the taxpayers, adding a burden to the taxpayers. Avon has AMR for their ambulance service and does not provide abatements to staff. It is a self-funding operation. Before the Board of Selectmen redistributes tax money through abatements, they should review whether they are accomplishing their intent to encourage volunteering in the community with abatements. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Pat and Twitter at Joan Co. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else here for the public hearing?
I'm doing a turnaround?
No, you're, no, we're in the public hearing. Um, just asking if everybody's had an opportunity to speak that's going to in the abatement. Okay. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed amendment to town code charter one forty-one, article five, tax abatement for volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel. So move. Second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that public hearing has been closed and we have an additional item later to discuss on that. With that, I will move to public audience. Um, I have a sign up sheet here of people, so we normally, the people who signed up go first and then we will allow people in the room to, to speak. Um, and remember that you have five minutes. I'm so pleased. Try to stick to your time frame so I don't have to, to gavel you. Um, and then we'll start with Mike Long. So if you can come up, also state your name and your address.
My name is Mike Long. I live at fifty Sarah Lane. And, uh, I've lived and worked in town of Simsbury for the last, well, over fifty years. My name was, I felt, taken in vain at the last board of selectmen meeting and I'm here to defend myself. During public audience, my photograph was displayed and it was said that our current outstanding police chief, Nick Bolter, uh, was selected to replace the, selected to replace the retiring late chief Pete Ingerson was my own handpicked candidate. Nothing could be further from the truth. The entire hiring process was handled through the town manager's office and a selection committee that consisted of the town manager, the first selectman, and two police commission members, the chair, a former Republican state legislator and eighth district state senator, and me, a former town selectman, and before that, a ten-year member of the Board of Finance. The town manager's office administered the project, which over several weeks included a nationwide search and narrowing by the committee to a smaller group of applicants, background checks, an interview of five finalists by a panel of regional police chiefs, and finally, a recommended selectee was handpicked unanimously. The selection was made by a committee after a process review by several layers of professionals and to be bad-mouthed by a bystander, I found insulting. Something else happened during the meeting, which I'm sure was new to some of you on the board, and so I'd like to just share a couple of thoughts. A recommendation was made by the chief to take advantage of some state funding for traffic enforcement, particularly speeding infractions in a number of high-risk areas identified by the state. The grant would be helpful to the lives and safety of our residents, primarily because we do not have enough officers and equipment or budget to do it all ourselves. These actions, to be carried out by our nationally certified police department, also are in response to complaints by a number of our residents. They are long overdue, but somehow got confused in what sounded like enforcement tactics. This is exactly the type of thing I talked about in our joint meeting in December between the Board of Selectmen and the Simsbury Police Commission, when I said that the original responsibility was delegated to the then-created police commission some twenty years ago because the Board of Selectmen realized that as part-time volunteers, they couldn't possibly be experts in everything and be, that's why you name liaisons to different boards, agents, agencies, commissions, including the police. I suggest you use those liaisons and then you ask your questions ahead of time if you can so that you can make the most of your times together in these meetings. And nothing is a surprise. I said then you should feel free to ask questions whenever you wanted. I haven't had any questions asked, but I want you to know that the door is still open. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Next up on the public audience sheet is Sharon Byron. I have a list of names here, Joan.
Uh, I'm Sharon Byron. I live at seventeen Cresty Road, Terrifil, and serve with the Simsbury Bike Public Safety Committee. I also have been a volunteer fire department person who's grown on point for ten years, so I was not aware of the hearing when I came in, so I do want to support, um, that group because I know how hard these people work and how dedicated they are. I grew up on Great Pond Road, starting at Central School. My four children grew up at Horseshoe Circle, attended squadron line, and my friends and I, who have grown up, have continued to cycle the East Coast Greenway from Acadia National Park in Maine to Key West, Florida. Since, uh, August twenty twenty, when my car was scrapped, I have ridden my twenty-one-speed bicycle from Terrifil Heights to Westminster School at seven AM. I swam at least a mile each morning and did errands in town and returned on three fifteen at eleven AM. My initial effort was to log miles to support the grants and have accept, uh, we have accepted to finish the Terrifil extension for the Terrifil School District. Thank you for considering this grant. My observations of traffic load, tailgating, and speeding have also been recognized with more grants as cyclists and pedestrians have been killed over this four-year experience. Cross ten two oh two to Westminster School. Were to take a left at the post office at nine thirty-two Hopmett Street, walking my bicycle or driving a car continues to be a hazard. Motorists use the bike sharrows to park a vehicle or worse, to pass on the right. For today, I'm here to support the Terrifil extension so I can cross the Farmington River at the historic pilings to get to my, air my bike tires at the pride station, head north to Granby or south to Simsbury Center. Climate and environmental considerations, I would like to see the extent Terrifil extension elevated and built to the character of the Canton and Collinsville Trails. I also have a question is if the board accepts the grant design money and we take ninety thousand from the budget, uh, will I be able to safely cross three fifteen from Terrifil Heights at Hayes Road where my hybrid working neighbors with school-aged children has in me reside? And so I want that to be a serious consideration in the design of the Terrifil extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next person on the list is Dave Richman.
Hello, David Richman. I live at fifty-two Wood Duck in Terrifil, and I'm here to talk about something that others have said, safety. Okay? Over in Terrifil, when you're coming from Granby on one eighty-nine South, they made that little cutoff that goes on to Main Street in Terrifil. I've seen three accidents, just bumps, and I've had an eighteen-wheeler coming at me and having to back up and go to the light and make the right turn. Something's gonna happen there and it's, it's too narrow for two, two directions. It needs to be one way out. Okay? And I mean, I, I take this thing sometimes five times a week and, uh, or a day. So I'm calling to make you guys aware that, uh, whoever designed it did not realize what the traffic patterns would be. And I, it's, it's just, you know, once they turn in there, they don't know where they're going and they try to cross to go to the package store and there's, you know, it's a small town, but the traffic patterns are very important. The other thing I want to talk about with Terrifil as far as safety is I own a three-bedroom, a three-family on Winthrop Street, so I spend time on Winthrop Street. You, we need to put in speed bumps. The amount of people that stop at the stop sign in front of Terrifil School and then fly right in front of the Cracker Barrel is, it's wa, it's frightening. And there's a lot of kids on those sidewalks, especially during, on the way home from school in the afternoon. So I'm asking you to please look into it to attempt to slow down these cars because, um, again, something's gonna happen because there's just too many kids playing on the street. So those are my comments and, um, one last one. Because there's been an increase of automobile traffic in town, and some of you know what I'm gonna say, we need to change the traffic pattern of the lights. They need to be longer green from seven AM to nine AM and then coming down the mountain, you know, need to be longer, obviously, so someone can go north or south off of one eighty, uh, five, is it? So the thing is, I'm on this road ten times a day. The traffic lights, they run on the same consistent pattern all day. If we change it, the traffic's gonna move so much better. I mean, it just backs up in front of Fitzgerald's at five PM. So just extend them for maybe three minutes longer and I think you'll find that, uh, traffic moves a lot better and more efficient through town. Thank you. And I did not go to college for transportation.
Um, next up, we have Deb Thibodeau.
Nor have I gone to college for transportation, but I feel like I've had a self-study. Um, Debbie Thibodeau, Five Woods and Drive. Um, I want to thank you for hearing my comments this evening. I'm here to request your support for the pro, proposed submission of a Connecticut deep two thousand twenty-four recreational trails grant to aid the completion of the East Coast Greenway in Simsbury, AKA the Terrifil Greenway. Many of you are new to the board, so let me provide a little bit of background on the importance of this project. The concept of completing a multi-use trail between Terrifil and the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail goes back at least as far as two thousand eleven and continues to be included in Simsbury's present-day planning documents. This trail is a high-priority recommendation in the two thousand eighteen pedestrian and bicycle master plan, page sixty-seven, and an action step in the two thousand twenty-four Plan of Conservation and Development, page forty-six. This trail will expand opportunities for healthy, active, safe, and accessible recreation and transportation for members of the community of all ages and abilities. It will provide a vital non-transportation, uh, non-motorized connection between the village of Terrifil, North Simsbury Shopping District, and Simsbury Town Center. It will close a critical gap in the East Coast Greenway, providing trail connectivity with Bloomfield and economic centers to the east. It will create economic opportunities by bringing local and regional trail users to Simsbury and Terrifil. And it has the potential to create a scenic landmark on the East Coast Greenway with a historic and environmental, with historic and environmental significance. And that would be a bicycle pedestrian bridge at the side of the old eighteen seventy-eight Terrifil rail disaster over the wild and scenic, uh, Farmington River. This grant is an opportunity to seek funding to advance the recommendations made in the Simsbury Recommendations Report of the CROG Capital Region East Coast Greenway Study. Other communities, including the region, in the regional CROG study are moving forward with study recommendations and funding. Momentum to complete the East Coast Greenway in the capital region is finally building. This momentum, combined with highly favorable conditions for state and federal funding for trails projects, means that now is the time to seek funding to advance this trail project to the desired days. During that stage, additional studies, environmental, cultural, and public input will help fine-tune the final route. This action is a logical step following the CROG report and the board's September twenty-seventh endorsement of a line two as a preferred corridor for the East Coast Greenway. For these reasons, I request your support, um, to submit the application for the Connecticut deep two thousand twenty-four recreational trails grant to aid the completion of the Terrifil Greenway, East Coast Greenway in Simsbury. Um, I cannot fully express how excited I am for this project to move forward.
Okay, um, next up, I, we have Mark Scully.
My name is Mark Scully. I live at twenty-nine Notch Road in West Simsbury. Um, I'm speaking tonight as the chair of Simsbury Sustainability Committee. And as you may know, the committee, um, has requested that the town engage and hire a sustainability coordinator. And I know there will be some budget hearings and ongoing discussions, but, um, the committee is strongly in support of this recommendation and, um, have been asking, you know, when can we make the case for this? So, um, I thought, let me come to public audience and at least, uh, so that you can hear this, hear this from me directly. Now, so I want to give you a little context for our recommendation and maybe a little more information about it. Uh, one thing you should know is this request is now over four years old. Uh, we, goes back to a budget request that we made in two thousand twenty for an energy specialist consultant to be shared between the town and the Board of Education. In two thousand twenty-one, the committee worked for several months on a climate emergency declaration. And we were ready to go public with it, but we were asked by the prior town manager to wait until an energy manager or sustainability coordinator could be hired to implement findings of that declaration. So that's still sort of waiting. Um, and as you may know, uh, in December of last year, we made a formal request and I think you will, you will have seen a note that lays out some of the reasons that we, uh, that we are, are making this request. I do want to make it very clear, um, the fact that we're asking for a new position to deal with these sustain, sustainability issues does not in any way, should not in any way reflect negatively on Director of Public Works Tom Roy or, uh, Director of Introstruction Technology Jason Casey from, from the public schools. They do incredible work and, uh, there is a long list of accomplishments that they've had already, uh, but they also have about ten other jobs each. Um, so you might ask yourself, why should we have this, why should we ask for this position? We have these able people on staff. We have a sustainability committee. And I had started to draft an answer to that and then Susan Van Cleef, who was a former member of our committee, shared this article with me. And I thought, this makes the case much better than I could. And it tells, uh, it's a story of a small town, about ten thousand residents in Hartford, Vermont, not Hartford, Connecticut. And I'll just read a little bit of their thought process. And their new sustainability or energy coordinator, Jeff Martin, talks about the Energy Commission, which is like our Clean Energy Task Force or Sustainability Committee. It says, "This commission really set me up for success. Through their work, they accomplished a lot and improved the importance of focusing on energy." Under the leadership of this commission, committed volunteers had worked for over a decade to promote energy efficiency, conservation, and local renewable energy deployment, aiming to ensure that our town's energy supplies will be reliable, affordable, and environmentally sound. According to the chair of the commission, uh, that would be me, uh, "The commission has made great strides towards meeting these goals. We started in two thousand seven. We were proud of what we did. We swapped out streetlights to LEDs, did municipal building audits." Does that sound familiar? That's all the stuff that our Clean Energy Task Force and Sustainability Committee has done. "But Martha and others knew there were limits to what volunteers and existing town staff could achieve on their own and that there was more money-saving to be had with a deeper focus and more capacity. Energy committees are amazing, but as smart and wonky as we are, we are not energy professionals," I thought. And you can go on to see how happy they are that they have made that, made that decision. Um, the other question is why now? And one reason for that is that there are generous federal funds available, as you know, from the Inflation Reduction Act, the bipartisan infrastructure law. Um, a lot of funds available for clean energy initiatives, clean tech. So this is a better time than ever to actually engage somebody to go after those. Even with, even without those bills, though, we are confident this position would be self-supported. Um, and I'm not gonna go through the whole list, but I'll, again, during that letter that you've probably already seen, but a couple, you know, major points are, um, we've done a bit of solar in town. We could do a lot more. Um, you may be interested in knowing that we generate about six point five percent of the town and schools' combined electricity with solar. We've got a couple of rays. The town is actually doing a bit better. We've got fifty-seven point seven percent through the skating rink and at the, um, and at Public Works. Uh, the, the, the schools are actually zero point three percent of their electricity. There's just a small array on the high school, many reasons for that. But the good news is there's a lot of potential. We can not only produce clean energy, we can save a lot of money. We can, um, engage, we can start projects, solar projects, that aren't even on town land, right? Wes Hartford does that. They, they commissioned with a developer to build an array in another town and they buy the electricity. So there's lots of things. We could put solar on the landfill. We could, um, engage in demand management program, which is actually earnest money. Um, so I won't go through the whole list. I would urge you to consider funding this position in part through these miniature bottle funds. Simsbury receives about fifteen thousand dollars a year. They're to be used for reducing waste and sustainability, and many towns have used the funds for this purpose. But in the end, it's not just about the money too, right? Even though this would be self-funding. Uh, sustainability, as we know from the P O C D discussions, is important to Simsbury and it's important to future generations. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else here for public audience? Oh, sorry. Susan?
It's okay. No, no.
Oh, I, I didn't get it.
It's okay.
Sorry, I'll put your name to him.
You're good.
Yeah, I just.
Joan Co., twenty-sixth Wickham Drive. At the February fourteen, twenty twenty-four Board of Selectmen meeting, First Selectman Wendy Maxduces rudely interrupted me when I was finishing my comments by immediately asking Lori Boiko to speak, the only indication that she might speak being her attendance to the meeting. The only reason for her immediate interjections was to intimidate and bully me in front of the SCTV cameras and her board. It appears that First Selectman Wendy Maxduces is unable and unqualified to chair the Board of Selectmen meeting and has displayed her disdain for public comment. First Selectman Wendy Maxduces has become unhinged at meetings during public audience and presenting agenda items when she appears not able to grasp the agenda items that she is presenting to the public. First Selectman Wendy Maxduces is an advocate for the police comfort dog and added seven and added seventy thousand dollars to the budget for the police officer and all expenditures attributed to maintain the dog. It appears the person most in need of comfort is First Selectman Wendy Maxduces. Therefore, I would suggest that the comfort dog and the officer attend the Board of Selectment Meetings to comfort Wendy Maxduces and have the dog rest under the desk where the panic button is situated, under Wendy Maxduces's seat. This might relieve First Selectman Wendy Maxduces of her anxiety during the meetings and have a more congenial meeting between the board and the public. Since First Selectman Wendy Maxduces voted for the expenditure for the comfort dog, has she attained a worksheet for the times, hours, places, and attendance of meetings that the comfort dog attended? Is First Selectman Wendy Maxduces aware that the officer in charge of the comfort dog has been assigned to fingerprinting in the records room, a clerical job in violation of the union contract while placing the dog in a crate during the fingerprinting process? It appears the comfort dog spends most of its time being uncomfortable. According to a police incident report, the officer and comfort dog was dispatched to a house to comfort a lady with asthma who called police on several occasions due to her neighbor smoking outside and causing her to have an asthma attack. The comfort dog might create more issues than anticipated since the lady has asthma and probably is allergic to the doghouse. It is alleged that according to Chief Bolter, any person over the age of sixty years living alone that calls the police should have the comfort dog dispatched to her home. This appears to be unduly excessive of use of the com, comfort dog and not using the resources effectively. First Selectman Wendy Maxduces should contact Chief Bolter for the policy directive for the use of the comfort dog. Chief Bolter recently received a final report from the exertist company, tasked to establish staffing and scheduling report on a thorough interview process within the police department. These are some of the comments to Chief Bolter. Build authentic rapport with ranks of the office and file of the officers. Seek department input for implementing fair selection processes. Consider term limits for special assignments and/or implement opportunities for job rotation. Develop debrief, debriefing procedures for those who apply for assignments or protocols, but do not receive, receive them. The task force consisting primarily patrol officers should be developed to seek officer input or challenges and solutions to create job satisfaction. These are very serious issues addressing the Simsbury Police Department under the management of Chief Bolter. Has Chief Bolter implemented any of these recommendations, or is this just another report to file away with all the past consultant reports? These failures in management probably was the reasoning behind the no confidence vote for the chief. First Selectman Wendy Maxduces recently stated that she will call A C L U to discuss the determination, rules, and procedures of public audience in violation of the Constitution. When First Selectman Wendy Maxduces discussed the problem, public, uh, with the public, her, uh, conversation with the A C L U and produce any written documentation as a result of her conversation. Both Selectmen Diana Yolzie and Curtis Looney displayed poor judgment by leaving the Board of Selectment Meeting at the library to protest against Moms validity in front of the library. Selectmen Diana Yosley and Curtis Looney should explain to the public their reasoning behind their dereliction of duty. Budgets are being drafted by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education that reflect the present and future economic climate that everyone is dealing with daily. The delivery of services should be regionalized to share expenditures and reduce redundancies. Expenditures must be reduced as the grant list is not keeping up with the increases in the budget. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch and Twitter at Joan Code. Thank you, Felicity.
Thank you, Joan. Um, Susan, five, five minutes. Stick your name and address, please.
Susan Mancliff, Sixth Mallard Circle. Um, I did not plan to speak tonight, um, but I think I just wanted to make a comment. I'm also glad, thank you, Joan. I'm over sixty. I'd love to get a visit from K nine Clifton. Thank you for letting me know. Um, so, um, the, I know that the grant for the bike trail is on the agenda. I actually, I live in Governor's Bridge. I feel like you should accept the grant because we need to move forward and do a study to find out if this is really an appropriate pathway. But I think that, um, I don't know how many members of the Board of Selectmen or even in the audience knew that the trail is, right now, this preferred trail goes over twenty-three hundred feet of our property. And it goes through the woods in the back of the condo. So what I'm asking, a couple of things, I know Heather graciously came out and walked with us. She will tell you, wear your boots when you bring your bug spray. Is that as we go through the process, you really respect us. We are a community of a hundred and twenty people with a variety of opinions and a variety of viewpoints. And that you really respect us. And also, before you make, maybe the grant isn't the same thing, but at any point in time, it would be really helpful if you could come out and walk with us because I know Heather was a little surprised when she came out to kind of understand where this trail was. And, um, you can contact me. I'd be happy to go for a walk with you. Just, you might need boots and bug spray. So just please respect the community. It's, it's not been the easiest process for us to go through. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Um, I prefer not to, but if we try to just move on. Give a bigger agenda tonight. I think that's okay.
Okay. I just, there are one hundred and forty houses in our area.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we've been through that with, with the hearings, but thank you.
And you've got those counts. Okay.
Um, for First Selectman's report, I am not going to take a lot of time tonight, given the agenda that we have. I just want to remind everyone that our budget workshop will be on March ninth. And it's all day, um, in this room, starting at nine o'clock, and everyone's welcome to sit in and listen to the process. And we should be here from now. Um, I just want to congratulate Susan Ray on her retirement from the library. And also, I thank you to the UConn students that came out and did their presentation, um, last, this week, last week, last week.
Last week.
Yeah, sorry. Time is melting. Um, with that, I'm going to turn this over to, um, the town manager for, for his report.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'll be brief also. I'll be presenting on the town manager budget later, so, uh, I, I didn't prepare town manager's report, uh, for this evening, but I do just want to take, uh, one quick second to thank the Rotary Club uh, for their invitation. I, I, uh, attended their meeting, uh, last week and got to introduce myself to, uh, that wonderful group. So thanks very much for having me. That's all I had tonight.
Oh, wow. Um, so like to, I'm going to start with Steve. I don't know, he's probably doesn't have a report because he's, he's still recovering, but I'm just going to start up there. And you're on mute, so it doesn't matter, Steve. Okay. Oops, and he's gone. I'm sorry.
Oh, there he is.
I, I don't. Need to put him on his pocket, so, but we'll start down here until he can speak, unless it's quick.
Steve, can you try talking?
Yeah, sure.
Did you want to say anything, Steve? Do you have any reports or anything?
No, do you want me to sing anything?
No, thank you.
Back on mute.
No, I, I do, uh, you know, a couple of committees, but I have nothing to report back. Thank you for making me short.
We hope you feel good. Um, I'm going to start, start down with Kevin, um, at your end.
I'll, I'll echo the, uh, congratulations to Susan Ray, um, thirty-nine years of service to the town of Simsbury, and, um, that goes a long way. And so it's much appreciated. Um, uh, Board of Assessment Appeals has, uh, meetings this month on Tuesday, the twelfth, the sixteenth, and, uh, the nineteenth. That's all for me.
Thanks, Kevin. Can I handle?
I just have two quick things, um, from Parks and Rec. They, I've, I have visuals. They have, are having a flashlight egg hunt, uh, Thursday, March twenty-eighth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty. You can register. Uh, there's two different times for different age groups. This is a supremely fun and well-attended event, so I encourage, uh, the town to attend. And from the Aging and Disability Commission, we are having a, um, sensory-friendly movie showing at the library. We're going to be showing Luca um, on Sunday, March twenty-fourth, from two-thirty to four, in the program room at the Simsbury Public Library. This is a free event. Uh, there will be refreshments, and then it is, um, the, you know, welcome to anybody, um, of all ages, free, um, who has a disability or has a family member with a disability and who would enjoy a sensory-friendly movie.
Um, I was just going to update on Personnel Subcommittee. Um, Heather, Steve, and I, we had a, um, special meeting last week because our next meeting is until March, March fourteenth. Um, but we, we got an update on the classification and compensation study that's been ongoing. Um, the questions have been sent out to staff. Um, and there's, uh, just the update on the R F Ps for the Labor Attorney. I believe the timeframe has come. We've received all those today. Um, and, uh, that's all I, I have, I think. So I'm going to turn it over to Heather. She has any updates?
No, the only, uh, meeting that I got for Subcommittee or Liaison was Personnel.
Okay.
Um, but the other thing we did have on our agenda there was that for anyone who applied to the Fair Ret Commission, um, we have received the applications and, um, our town manager's office will be in touch uh, to, uh, potentially, um, interview, ask more questions, but, um, that's an, uh, ongoing process.
I have a question for you. Well, um, is there, is there a Mo, March, um, Public Safety Subcommittee meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure that's coming up. Um, Curtis, any, any updates?
Late March.
Uh, I'll try to quick, uh, planning, you know, there's lots going on. Um, they decided to table the, um, food trucks, or withdraw the food trucks, um, for further review, I think resubmit it. Uh, Talcet South was, uh, they rejected Talcet South. Um, and Vassal, um, they decided to accept the, um, the deal, uh, negotiated settlement, right? That's a problem.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Um, so we're heading into the, the sol, well, the consent agenda. So, um, I, I, I'm going to, I have a couple items that I would suggest that we move to the consent agenda. Um, one of them is, um, first to add this reappointment to the Board of Assessment Appeals and add it to the consent agenda. Since we just got this, I think I can do that, right? Done?
You need a two-thirds vote to add that to the agenda.
And then add it to the consent agenda. Okay.
Right. Do you know what your rules and procedures say about adding something on the floor to them?
Well, we can, so, well, I'll ask for, um, a vote to add this, uh, um, item to the agenda so that the, we can potentially appoint someone to the Board of Assessment Appeals for the upcoming meeting.
If I could, I'd, I'd be happy to add that to the motion about adding it to the consent agenda and adding it to the agenda for tonight, if that suits with you.
Great, do it all at once. Second.
Okay. Which one did you want on the consent agenda?
Oh, um, I was looking at item B, which is the, the tax refunds. And then I was going to add item C. It's a change in job title to the assistant assessor, and it's been approved by the Personnel Subcommittee. And then the last item I have was the appointments of the Technology Task Force.
Okay. And the resignation was wrong?
I was going to do say something like, uh, that. That's okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So you moved that?
So I'll make that motion and ask that we, um, in the consent agenda, uh, add the reappointment for the Board of Assessment Appeals for Kenneth Katz that was presented to us some time ago.
Okay. Does somebody want to, else move it? Second. Okay, um, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda done. All right, so the next item is the actual proposal on the amendment that we just closed the public hearing for. And we, there's a couple of options for, for action tonight. One is to, to table it, um, till next meeting so that we can, you know, mull over the comments, which really weren't that many. Um, and answer, there's, there might still be a couple of outstanding questions. So I was going to put, phrase those right now and then see if anybody else had any questions. Um, the one question that was raised by, um, Gary Wilcox, Wilcox was to change the two-year period in the amendment to one year. We talked about that last week, but I don't think, I think the change will be made after. It's not currently in here, though. It was published, correct?
Correct. The one that, yes, no.
Um, that was one change. And then the other question I had, well, the other question was to the amount of the increase was based originally in the agenda item on the two years and not the one year. And I don't know if we have an update to that, although I think we do have an update to that. Okay, so, and, well, then the third question that I had was, um, has the town attorney reviewed this? Um, which was still pending.
Yeah, uh, he hasn't reviewed it yet, um, for the minor changes that you have. Just, it's this format that he reviewed from a couple of years ago where we just changed the date from five years to two years. Um, but we can send it off to his review.
Okay.
Like the final review, once you guys make, if you make any revisions tonight.
Okay. Um, well, the, the one-year revision is, needs to be made, Curtis. And do we have the figure for the, the?
So if you change it to members that have served for one year, um, that meet all the other criteria, um, it added four total people. And the difference between what is currently, um, the ordinance as is written versus the proposed one year would be a difference of about thirteen thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars. Um, that's just the fire. It don't have the volunteer ambulance part, but it would be, um, smaller than that.
Um, would the board prefer to move, table this to next week so we have the full information here and we can see the changes? Subconsensus.
I, I think I would like to see the, the final language and have the attorney's review.
Yeah, okay, that's great. Um, so I'd like to, um, ask for a motion effective February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four to table.
I had, I had some comments as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And just to, since, since we're talking about it, um, in the document, and I, um, talked with, um, uh, uh, some members as well, because I wanted to make sure that I wasn't, um, uh, you know, adding any concern here. I think the intent on this is to, um, abate, um, the property taxes for, you know, personally owned residential property. And I just think it would be helpful to include some language, and maybe our attorney can recommend that personal property is different than, you know, residential property. I understand that. I just, I, I think that the intent is not that if somebody retires and leaves and they have, you know, um, a commercial property here, that that's abated, and I have no concerns with that, but apparently that's not what's happening now. So I would, uh, feel more comfortable if we clarified the language and the, and the ordinance that covers that. That's all for me.
Okay, um, you got that? Yeah, I had those notes from last time, the residential, correct?
Yep, no, no problem. Yep. And so since we're updating the language and all that, and I'm happy to make a motion to table the, uh, the, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, so, oh, oh, yeah, sure.
Um, is it coming back to our next meeting? Because isn't, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because I didn't know if we needed to postpone or table this thing when it's coming back.
I'm going to read, I'm going to read the motion and insert the date for the next meeting. Okay?
Cool.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for motion effective February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four to table the proposed amendments to Town Code Charter one forty-one, Article Five, Tax Abatement for Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Personnel to the Board of Selectment Meeting on March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And, and how about, somebody want to make that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
That's Steve's.
Steve made it. We'll give it to Steve.
Sure.
Um, any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, that passes. Let's go into next week.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the next item is the supplemental appropriations for the Terriffell modulators. Um, Jason, you're going to give us some background on this?
Yep.
Great.
So I'll start with saying I'm happy to report the Terriffell modular project is complete, so we do have our modulators in place. Uh, they were contracted to have, uh, a rough grade finish, uh, as site work, meaning that it was up to us to do things like seeding the grass and putting in the sidewalks, all of which was budgeted for and planned for. Uh, now that construction has been completed, we've, uh, found some drainage issues with the site that we want to address. That's the eighteen thousand dollar additional appropriation. Uh, the funding actually will be coming from our capital non-recurring fund, uh, school district's capital non-recurring fund. So it's just a reallocation, not, uh, an, an additional allotment. Uh, the only reason that this has to be, uh, done through a vote, uh, both by Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance is that, uh, because the project was originally done through referendum, uh, any additional supplemental funding has to go through the boards as well. That'll take any questions?
Yeah, um, do we have many questions on the board? I, I had a question.
Sure.
Um, so it said that you won't be completing this pipeline air quality project, and that was back in November twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
So has that just been not, like, it was approved in the C N R and?
It was approved in C N R. It's actually, uh, air conditioning, uh, it's a hallway air conditioning project. Uh, the main concern was some, uh, unusually high humidity in the area. Although we found a few things that seems to have abated that. Uh, as it turned out, the, the way the carpets were being done was a major contributor that the extractor wasn't extracting enough of the water. And once we got some new equipment in, that seems to have gone a long way to fixing that problem. So we were on hold with the, with the air conditioning project and felt that if we did see it moving forward, we'd add it in the future budget.
Okay, so basically, it's an unneeded project at this point in time?
Yeah.
Um, okay, now, anybody else have any questions? All right, um, looking for a motion effective. Alright, um looking for a motion effective February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four to approve the supplemental appropriation for the Terrafill Modular Classroom Project in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars and transfer said funds from the CNR Fund to the Capital Projects Fund to cover the cost of the overage. So much. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Um the next item, thanks Jason.
Thank you.
Next item is the supplemental appropriation for the Dial-A-Ride Bus. I don't see Kristen here. Um I I was just gonna, did you, did you, did you plan to talk about this or do you want me to just go over it?
You can, you can take it if you want.
Oh, you, you, are you ready to? You, uh give it to, you, you can.
Um I mean, it, um so basically the cost of the bus is paid through a grant. Um the time to get a bus in the car has gone up and the cost of buses have gone up um since we got our initial grant put in. So this is a additional supplemental appropriation for the grant um to acquire our bus, which should be here by late spring. Um and there is no cost to the town for it, it's just to cover the full cost of the bus to the grant.
One question.
Yeah.
So if a certain amount was applied for for the grant and now it's more money, or is it a reap- are you reapplying for another grant or is the grant just, when you apply for it, is it just cover the cost and now that the cost increased, the grant will cover a higher amount?
The answer was both. Um basically, we applied for one part, one grant when we did, when um during the twenty-one, twenty-two budget process. And that got us basically in line to get the bus. And then as the costs and time, as it takes longer to get the parts through like COVID and all that, the cost went up, so then we had to, we had to apply for the second part, our second grant for the same bus, but it's the same grant.
So we will, we will get the funding then, it's not?
For the sense. Yeah, we're a pass-through.
Okay.
So it'll come, yeah.
That sounds good, okay.
So, I'm ca- I'm.
Yeah, so I have a question also.
I'll let you know.
Um and it may, I don't, so my question is, did you, if you ordered the bus, if you, if you had a grant and you ordered the bus in twenty-one, twenty-two budget process season, um and that's, if you ordered the bus then, I understand that things are taking a while and costs change, but why wasn't the cost locked in at that time?
That I, that I don't know. Um and we've seen it in other um areas of like vehicle purchasing and all that, um for the last couple of years, it's just what the industry.
Because it's one thing usually where you order something and you lock in something at that time and then on deliverable, like it's, you know, that cost may have changed, but you've locked in, you know, if I bought a car.
Yeah.
I order it now and, but but when it's ready, if the price has changed, well, I locked into this price. That's, that's why I'm wondering why, um i- if we bought it, like why did the cost go up if we put the order in to purchase it at that other time?
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, that's just unanswerable. It's just, it was put in at that point in the budget process and then the cost just went up and so the state is allocating more money, it's the, the towns are negatively impacted.
I I just wanna tag onto that question. I just was gonna ask, um it said that due to the vehicle shortages and inflationary factors, the bus is now a hundred and seventeen, I, I get that it's gonna be paid for, but we approved it in the twenty-one, twenty-two, which is back in March twenty twenty-one. Did we order the bus back in twenty-two? Or did we just order the bus and the costs have gone up? That's just.
Yeah, I'd have to find that out.
Okay.
Hmm.
I know the answer. I didn't order it back then.
Okay, good. Oh, we did, okay.
It did take a couple of years to get, the same thing with the police cruisers downstairs and then the same thing with out of highway as well.
I don't want to hear that, thanks.
Do you know why, like, they don't lock you in at a price when you order it?
Um.
Hmm.
I don't know, I know that we're allowed to place the order, but um I think it has to be within like the state contract and I guess the state contract goes up and the manufacturer's price goes up, um they can't lock us in at a loss, if you will. Um because they know that we're gonna be purchasing it, you know, at an inflationary rate. Um and that's just my own experience at at dealerships, my husband works at a dealership, so um they don't, they don't offer that. You order the vehicle and then you come and they, they negotiate.
As long as the state's paying for it, right? Absolutely. I guess that's a, a plan.
I had, I had one question. Who's, who signs this, is this signed by the town manager Mark? Will you sign the grant? And then I have no concern.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, but it sounds like the grants already come to us back in the day, right? And we don't have to re-sign it?
If he's reviewing it in his office, I have no concern.
Okay. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion effective February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four to approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of fifty-three, one seventy-one for the purpose of purchasing a second bus for Simsbury's Dial-A-Ride Program.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that passes. Um so now we're on the emergency management performance grant application. Um this is, I'll let Tom talk about this. It's a, it's an annual grant, Tom. Is that?
It's for Adam.
Oh, is this an Adam?
I believe it's Adam.
Okay. It's not an Adam grant.
Oh, this is, sorry, wrong grant. Sorry. Oh boy. Um yes, this is a, that was pretty good. Sorry, we gotta use that next time, I thought.
It got it mixed up.
It's not a Mark whip. Yes, this is, it comes in from our, from Mike Barry, Emergency Direct, Emergency Management Director.
Like, not it.
Um and it is a annual one that comes before you every year. Um you have two that come in through him, the other one's a homeland security grant. Um and this helps kind of offset some of the funds to cover the costs of Emergency Management Director salaries. And it, it is again, passed through from the state, yeah.
And I, I, I just had a question. We're applying for the twenty-three, twenty-four grant even though we're really talking, eventually, we're almost talking about twenty-four, twenty-five and everything else, correct?
It's the federal fiscal year, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any questions?
No, the federal fiscal year ends in October of twenty-four, so that's why it's this, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. Got up on my fiscal years, but thanks, Kevin. Anybody? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion effective February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four to apply for the twenty-three, twenty-four Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented, and in the event that the grant is awarded, um the following motion is in order to accept the twenty-three, twenty-four Emergency Management Performance Grant and to authorize Mark Nelson, town manager, to execute all documents related to the grant award. So I've.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. The next item is the um, this Connecticut Deep twenty twenty-four recreational trails grant application. Now this one is Adams, correct?
If you're not.
I wouldn't have done anyone else say favors. Alright, good evening. So this grant uh is a deep rec trails grant. We've applied for them in the past for um most recently was the Curtis Park Trail, which uh I swear is gonna be constructed soon.
Oh, good.
We're still working through some uh, another grant for the construction of that. We're getting it. Deep Trails Grant is a ten million dollar program for this round. Uh typically, the past projects range from ten thousand to as much as six hundred thousand. Applications due March eleventh and uh we've almost wrapped that application up and we'll be submitting it uh shortly. Uh the project is the Terrafill Greenway. Um Debbie kinda explained everything there asked me to do already, so I won't repeat uh what she said, but um this one connects a farming canal heritage trail to Terrafill. It's the, designated as alignment two in the study that Crog commissioned. It's the alignment that the Board of Select endorsed back in September. And our scope basically will take us to the sixty percent design phase. Um essentially, we're only asking for about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the grant itself would be three sixty. Uh we would put in ninety as the match and that would come from the uh CIP project from FY twenty-three that was already allocated last year, um or this past fiscal year. The scope would include the survey and a lot of the environmental investigations that are required uh to kind of get us to our preliminary design. Preliminary design would occur about thirty percent. And then we'd get into the public outreach, have some public meetings, get some comments from the public. Address those concerns, comments through that um effort and get us to about design development, which is around sixty percent design. The intent of, of only submitting for four fifty as opposed to the whole amount is, we understand that once you reach a certain threshold, which is around five hundred thousand dollars uh through this grant program, there's some more paperwork and strings attached and oftentimes that can delay the award and um when the money actually reaches us. So um through consultation with Deep, um as well as uh East Coast Greenway, it was decided we would just achieve the sixty percent design. That'll take about twelve to fifteen months and then we'll apply for a future grant to continue the project uh further. And I mean, that pretty much sums up our project. Uh happy to answer any questions uh they might have. Uh we're really, really excited to get this one going.
Any questions?
My one thing, I'm just to be sure, 'cause I was out campaigning, um I was in that area. One of the things was there, there was a lot, there was concern for just to be sure that, you know, as you go through the public conversation, uh just to be sure that their concerns are addressed.
We certainly will. Um and that's kind of, you know, a lot of the questions that came up during that public comment period as part of that study, those questions will be answered through the additional studies that, that will be performed. Kind of once we select where that alignment might go through their property, there's going to be discussions with them. Uh there'll be the, you know, fauna flora, painted toad studies and what have you. That can answer a lot of those questions and kind of steer us in a, in right direction. The other component to that, of course, is uh I think the endorsement from September did indicate
I was gonna.
a distance or um acknowledging that we're not gonna be right up against somebody's home. So we'll, we'll certainly be inviting them to any public comment periods that we have um during our preliminary design. And our hope is during that, we'll have all the answers from the studies that'll occur during the first phase of this work.
Any other questions?
The ninety thousand dollars uh from the town, that's a direct cost contracting with the engineering firm or other indirect costs that are covered in under ninety thousand, just unsure.
So the, the whole four hundred and fifty thousand that, that we'll spend under this project is basically for consultants. We'll hire, we'll go through a competitive process for the um, to select a consultant to, to move forward with. Our ninety thousand is the local match.
Okay.
And that, this grant is typically done in a reimbursable fashion where we spend the money and then submit for reimbursement for eighty percent of what's, you know, what the cost is.
I have a couple of questions. So um I did wanna say, um what Adam just said to, to put your concerns in that. Um when we met in September, the board, the last board made a, a amendment to the, is it a resolution, Adam, we did or?
I think it was a resolution.
Yeah, um to make sure that it, they like kind of do no harm and for little harm to the neighbors when we were, we were on the board, so. And that was one thing that we did all talk about and make sure that was in there. Um I just wanted to ask, so I think it was, was it two years ago? We, the Board of Selectment put our, some ARPA funds, three hundred thousand dollars in for the design um to go from Terrafill Park to the
To Curtis.
Uh well, Curtis now, we're not going to Curtis, whatever. So is this, um this is the same project and we're just asking for additional funds on top of what we funded at that point in time um to, to, to do this design piece?
No, so we, we will be using those funds. So there won't be any additional appropriation on top of that, 'cause I think that, that number was around three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
At that time. Uh so we're using ninety thousand of that three hundred.
Is that, that's what that's coming from? Okay, that's what I was, okay.
That's what this is, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um I'm looking for a motion effective February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four to submit a grant application to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to authorize town manager Mark Nelson to execute the grant application. And also, if it's awarded, move to accept the grant and authorize town manager Mark Nelson to execute all documents related to the grant award. And further move to appropriate the grant funds and recommend said appropriation to the Board of Finance. Let's move that. So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it had, what's the total cost? So once, you know, it's done and all the painted toads and everything like that you said are dealt with and uh people are actually able to use the trail, do, do we have that sense of, of what that is and time to completion and then total cost?
So, yeah, that's kind of a loaded question. Um.
But there's a magic ball, I know, in your office that tells these things.
It is, it's uh it's often long, unfortunately, um lately. But um so all in designing and construction, it's, it's somewhere in the tune of thirteen to fifteen million to make this, this connection. And about five million of that is the bridge that would have to be constructed. We have, have no intent of advocating or trying to put a CIP project in that covered fifteen million dollars for a trail. Our intent is to heavily seek grants um for the construction, for additional design uh to complete this project. And right now, um part of the reason why we're, you know, the, the study occurred and we're pushing pretty hard on getting into the design of this is that DOT has made it a priority to close the East Coast Greenway gaps that exist throughout the state. They will fund uh nearly every project that comes across their desk for East Coast Greenway. This is the East Coast Greenway um gap that we have in town that'll be closed. And right now with um any trail project uh that's put forth for, you know, construction, they will the federal government will pick up eighty percent of the costs and the state will pick up the other twenty. So there's no match for construction, uh related projects on the East Coast Greenway. That's our intent of, of trying to push this forward. Um, you know, maybe a free trail would be kind of cool. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's a big, it's a big project. From a timeline standpoint, you know, something like this is, is probably five years out at the absolute earliest. Um we have probably two to three years just worth of design studies, uh public comment and permitting certainly to get through uh the, so to think about construction. So it's, it's a good five, ten-year timeframe for construction to start and be completed. But we're hoping to kind of strike while the iron's hot with the funding from the federal government as well as the state.
And if we vote on it tonight, uh um the application is due March eleventh, so there's really not much room to table it or have any further discussion. We voted tonight and if we vote no, then we're not getting it.
Yeah. Um I, I did, but another discussion I had printed you too?
I have another discussion.
Mine is, oh, I don't know if they'll be the same. Uh I, this, is this in our capital plan, this item? Like for, for twenty-four, twenty-five, right? Okay.
It is. Mm-hmm.
That's the question.
I, the question I had, um, I'm near your scope. Um when we had to go for, to referendum because we had all of those grants. You know, we're seeing all these grants coming through to us already, no disagree. Is that something that we're keeping track of or that we run the risk of another referendum on grant items? Okay, good.
Now they're on the finance director's report every month. We're on finance, we are tracking it just to make sure.
Yes, that's perfect. Okay.
Actually, I have a Greenway question. And this was just an observation. Um I was driving down and I saw that the Simsbury side was, was, was plowed?
Okay.
Like the, the new area we had, but the, the Bloomfield side didn't seem like it was. Is there like a combined effort to make sure it's open or? Or how would this be maintained also too? Is it our town that does this?
Right, yeah, it would be ours uh to maintain. Um in terms of plowing operations on greenways, uh it's up, it's a town-by-town type of decision. And a lot of towns elect to not plow their greenways to allow for cross-country skiing, um snowshoeing and winter activities on them. We elect to plow some of the trails, I think, down on Iron Horse.
A few areas in the park, I don't know. Few active areas.
Um. Yeah, the most active like walking areas, we do. But yeah, it's a town-by-town basis generally.
Um so, so that's, we're in discussion, so I'm gonna just ask for a vote to pass this. Um all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously, so we need to have that done.
Thank you.
Um, so I, I'm, I'm just wanted to highlight, um we have been a, a resignation tonight. And it's the resignation of Larry, Larry Boardman from the Zoning Board of Appeals. He passed away on Friday and his funeral was today. Um and I just wanted to say a couple of things about Larry, 'cause I, I didn't really know him, but he ran for office with us. And he was like so enthusiastic about running for office, um so, so enthusiastic. And he was like so enthusiastic about running for office. Um so it's so enthusiastic that we kind of were, we were, it was very surprising. Um but in the funeral, I went to the funeral today, I was at Weinstein's Memorial, you know, as a, growing up Jewish, I had been there for lots of friends, parents and stuff, so I wanted to go. Um and he was also a Bloomfield High graduate, a lot older than me, but I also felt aligned to him. I didn't really know him, but I just, I went for those reasons. And his son Adam read a letter that he wrote um and he kind of called it dying while living or living while dying. And um he said in it that he, he wrote it in October and then he was trying to keep really busy and he knew the cancer was coming back. And one of the ways, and these were his words, he he wanted to be active. And so he ran, he was a zoning ZBA alternate, but he wanted to run for the full seat to go through the election. Um and he won and he was very zealous about running. And in this letter that he wrote that they read at his funeral, he thanked all those on the town committee. Um for giving him the opportunity to run and he also thanked everyone that supported him in running. Um so I did want to read his resignation letter. I don't usually do this, but um it was to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is with heavy heart that I must resign effective immediately as a commissioner on the Simsbury Zoning Board of Appeals due to health reasons. When I accepted the nomination almost a year ago, my long-term health situation was pretty stable. And was with the understanding that this may become a problem. It has now become an issue that I need to address full-time. This was dated February eighteenth. I have been honored to serve on the board with wonderful committed people. Please pass on my best wishes to everyone sincerely, seriously, Larry Lawrence Boardman. Um so, gonna ask for a motion, um retroactive to February eighteenth, twenty twenty four, to acknowledge the receipt of the resignation of Larry Boardman as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I sadly love this.
Steve, you second that? Um, any further discussion? All all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for allowing me to do that. Um, the minutes before, um. I I had a correction to the minutes. I'll say if anybody else had any corrections. Uh, okay.
Do you have a move to approve the minutes?
Well, I want to make the correction.
Okay.
So um, give me a minute here. Um on page three, um the discussion on the PEGPISHA grant. Um, there was three motions that were made. I, it said I voted no on the first motion, but I voted yes on the first motion. And then I voted yes on the second motion and it was the third motion which is correct that I voted no. So the first motion is incorrect. Okay.
Just need a motion to amend the minutes.
So I need, I, yeah, I was just gonna get there.
You need to amend it, okay.
I was gonna get there. So I I want to make a motion to amend the minutes as stated.
Okay.
Minutes aren't on the table. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented and um if there's a second, then we can have discussion and amend those minutes.
Is there a reason we can't do it the way we just said we were doing it? Okay, all those in favor say aye. We amended, I thought I made the motion to amend the minutes as discussed.
We, we.
Well, what do we do?
We need to have a uh have them open on the table as a a vote, then we say I want corrections, so I'm voting, taking a. Motion to amend the minutes after the initial motion is on the table.
Okay. So.
Not trying to be hard, I'm just trying to help us with the process, that's all.
Okay, so where where are we in the minute emotions?
Did you reading? Uh, there's a motion and a second on the table.
Okay, so we're all voting to approve it?
The 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 motion on the table is to approve the minutes as presented, but you had a reasonable edit that you wanted to make for for a correction and and so.
You want corrections.
I'm making a motion to amend the minutes that are now on the table.
Right. Right.
To correct them as stated.
Right.
Somebody wants to second that?
I'll second.
I'll second. Okay.
Okay. All those in favor on the amended minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, so we we're doing things a little differently tonight. Um, we usually do the budget presentation first, but we figured let's get everything out of the way. Mark can have his time um to present the budget. And Amy and Melissa didn't have to sit through the whole meeting. They're here now. So all yours, Mark.
All right.
Budget.
Budget.
I'm gonna stand up so I can actually see people, so um, and thanks very much for moving this around and uh, cause I know we've got two uh.
Right now.
Executive sessions coming uh up uh as well. So uh I've got a a brief PowerPoint to go through and then we'll. Uh take some questions at the end. Before we start, I I just want to frame this discussion uh tonight uh and and forgive me, some of this, of course. I've spoken with board members individually about and and I'm sure you all know uh the challenges that the town of Simsbury faces. Uh particularly this year, uh as we get into the twenty four, twenty five budget process. So. A- as I said in my budget message, uh which was circulated and posted online today, you know, we view uh on the administration side. Uh the the kickoff of this budget season uh wi- with great excitement. Uh because the challenges I think that you'll see tonight, uh we think will force some really strong and important conversations. Uh that uh center around things like grand list growth and and housing and and important capital projects and. Uh a lot of the things as we worked on this internally, touched on the goals and objectives that your board has been working on. Uh and so as we got further into the process, we realized that this is actually good, that it's happening a- at the same time as you're. Coming up with your goals and objectives for the next uh couple of years, uh because we hope to frame those together. So what you'll end up with, we think, uh is a a really strong budget that uh fully funds the objectives and the goals. Uh that uh that we're working on together. So with that said, let's get to uh slide one if we can. Um wha- what you're looking at is just a quick snapshot. I like to get to the money slide first. Uh this is giving you a just a hundred thousand foot view of the budget, uh showing you uh uh year-over-year comparisons, the change and the change percentage. Uh on the key areas that we're gonna be talking about tonight. Uh and again, I'll mention at the end, but let me just get uh there now that there's also. Uh a a number of uh opportunities to delve into some of the details here, notably uh on March ninth. Uh at uh our rather lengthy, uh we've got a lengthy plan for the budget workshop on March ninth. Uh but this slide gives you the, you know, the basic numbers. You're seeing uh increases across the board. Uh but most importantly, you're seeing a sharp decline in anticipated revenue. So I want to just draw your uh attention right to those two numbers. You'll see it uh on the left, seventeen thou- uh seventeen million, one fifty four. Uh in twenty-three, twenty-four, declining to twelve million, eight oh one. This is kind of where we start tonight for the discussion and we'll be spending some time uh on the challenges that this pose is to. Uh that this poses to your work, to the work of our colleagues uh at the Board of Ed, uh and also at the Board of Finance. Uh it it is a a budget that we describe as, uh you know, a a we have a revenue problem, not a, not an expense problem. And I think that's a theme that you're gonna hear a little bit about tonight uh in incoming weeks. Uh if you look at net expenditures going up by seven uh million, four hundred thousand, it's an increase of seven point uh one five percent. So I just want to take a minute uh to, if you look at that footnote, uh probably one of the more important things to remember as we get into some of the detail. Uh is that decline in revenue is really twofold. Uh it's the exhaustion of ARPA money. Uh which also I spent a little time talking about in the budget message that you've got. Uh and um also, we are not gonna be getting the motor vehicle reimbursement uh monies that we did uh this year. Uh as part of last year's budget, that one point five million dollars. So typically, when we look at budgets. We want to focus on expense side, what's driving the increase. Uh in this particular case, we want to frame this message a little bit differently uh and make sure that everybody starts with the with the uh framework. Uh that on the revenue side, you've got that uh three point seven million dollar drop. I guess the 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 key thing is, uh and again, referring to the budget message, but I will say for the benefit of of the public that. Uh and as the new town manager, the town made really good choices about, for the most part, how to spend ARPA money. And a lot of work and effort and thought went into the choices that were made. Uh and I I'm very grateful for that effort on the part of uh both this board, the Board of Finance and and the staff that. Has been here working uh through multiple years of budgets and COVID and so forth. So, you know, we're not facing a situation like many communities are. Where the ARPA money is exhausted and we've got all kinds of programming and personnel and. Uh and a continuing obligation to fund that. So it's a really good news story that while we've exhausted the ARPA money. We're not left holding the bag with significant amounts of expense side problems. Uh we'll go to the next slide and we'll come back to some of the revenue issues. Uh again, I I prefer to just start right with the nitty-gritty, with the numbers that. Uh some of us have talked about over the last couple of weeks, like what is the taxpayer impact on this budget? And again, you know, the the bottom line number is very high, that's seven point eight eight percent change. Uh this is a slide that presents you what the impact would be to uh a median value, single-family homeowner. Uh and that number is six hundred and sixty-five dollars. So this is based on a median valuation of three hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred. You're seeing a proposed increase to the mill rate, taking us uh back up to thirty-three point two five. Again, keep in mind that this is driven not just by the expense side of the equation, but by a rather precipitous decline in in uh revenue. So uh before we go to the next slide, let me just editorialize here that. What we tried to do as we presented the preliminary budget is give this board and all of the approvers and the public when this gets to referendum. Uh some choices to make. I think that the seven point eight eight percent tax increase that's proposed is a high-end number. Uh and with uh additional efforts uh by the approvers, uh that might be lowered. But those are decisions that have to be made by our our policymakers. Uh what we've tried to do is present a budget that gives you the best opportunity to see from a high level. Uh what choices you have as you go through your review process. Next slide. So for fiscal twenty-five, general fund expenditures, this is a slide you're all familiar with and think. You know, it appears in every budget book uh in the country and just gives you a breakdown of uh what we're spending our money on. Uh and as everybody uh knows and expects, the the big bulk of this is is uh education. Uh and uh nothing is really changing in terms of the pie chart, the the total expenses are going up and the revenue's going down. But what we're really spending uh within each department as a percentage uh is not terribly different from what uh. Uh the town has been approving uh over the years. Next slide. Looking at the detail behind that, we'll just get into the uh the numbers just a little bit. Uh and I know we'll get some questions on this, but again, education at the top representing sixty-nine point two four percent of your total uh expenses. Uh debt service is up, uh I'd say slightly, uh it's a eight point nine million, that's seven point one four percent. Uh we can uh provide some background as we get into the budget workshops about uh what's driving the debt service increase. Uh importantly, you know, we anticipate that uh and hope that debt service starts to decline. Uh as uh as some of the debt is paid off and uh that's a a rosier story for the years ahead, I think. Benefiting insurance, I won't go through all of these, but certainly the top four or five uh drivers. Uh are uh important to take a look at, you know, our biggest uh obligations in terms of what we're spending our money on. Uh is public safety, public works and community services. Uh general government, what we spend in this building to provide uh the the backdrop and the back office work for all of those services. Uh is only, and we'll talk about this again later, going up two point eight percent. Uh and so as you review the budget and you uh deliberate on some of the choices that we've made and and are recommending to you as part of this package. Please keep an eye on that two point eight number, uh cause you'll hear it come up again later. Uh it is uh the the what what is driving the costs are not choices that we're making. Uh in terms of adding tremendous uh asks to the budget. Uh and in fact, all of these are less than the seven point eight eight percent tax increase, uh if you look at that. So uh that gives you a a little background on how we're spending our money. Next slide. And you you've got to really also look at the revenue. This slide doesn't change much year over year either, uh other than in this case, we've lost one point five million in. In motor vehicle, right? Um that is a a theme that you will be talking about. You know, what can this board, the Board of Finance and others do to mitigate a a rather unusual revenue drop, right? Uh that's something that you'll hear a a little bit more about at the budget workshop, but certainly property taxes. Uh are the largest percentage, nearly ninety percent, of what we are bringing in in revenue. And I think this goes to some of the comments that some of you have made during our goal-setting sessions, the importance of of economic development. Uh the importance of growing the grand list. Uh i- if you're not growing the grand list, then your tax burden is solely with the existing. Uh property owners and you'll see that, as you see here, uh they are carrying uh by far the biggest burden. Uh of uh of our revenue. Next slide. Uh this is a new slide that didn't appear in the budget books in in, I think that we had one last year, but the revenue outlook is taking a snapshot at the grand list. Uh in hopes that we can have a a conversation uh about development and its impact on our ability to. Continue to have a premier education system for our youth and to continue to fund increasing costs in an inflationary environment. Uh and notice the precipitous drop. This is adjusted for the revale, so the revale doesn't have anything to do with it. You're just seeing. Where where we experienced a a large grand list growth uh previously. Uh and now, uh as I I indicated, you've got a a zero, uh point zero six, I think some sixty-six thousand dollars roughly in new revenue raised. Uh which is, you know, for to to all intents and purposes, zero grand list growth. And that coupled with the revenue losses of ARPA and the motor vehicle tax uh is a uh is causing the real problem and the challenge. Next slide. One thing we're adding to to the budget book and and to the, you know, at least to the presentation part of this is just to give you a quick snapshot on some of the things that didn't make it in. Uh to uh the manager's recommended budget, because I think, and we had some discussions internally about this, that. You know, historically, boards look at budget proposals with an eye to, well, we've got to cut because we've got to get that mill rate down. And that's obviously your your primary goal, as it was ours. But I think to not have at least a a an understanding of what we didn't put in. Uh it 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 would be an oversight on our part. So you're gonna see this moving forward as uh as I submit annual budgets. What was uh discussed and and seriously considered, but didn't make it in. And it it's interesting because uh and and I'll just point this out because we had uh public comment earlier about the sustainability coordinator and. You know, I I I I took note of that, uh it it it's just something that didn't make it to the operating budget and. This is something that based on the comments you've heard and your own experience, some of you've been on the board uh longer than others. And certainly, you know, is is this something that you want uh to consider, but it didn't make it into the preliminary budget. Uh because of the competing interests of the four or five things that we are asking for uh on the operating side. And so those tough decisions we had to prioritize. Uh the same thing is true with respect to capital. You know, there's some, you know, bigger ticket items, frankly, that uh are needed and, you know, to 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 my mind, and again, being the new town manager, I had to weigh these things. Uh I'll I'll took a little extra time because, you know, I wasn't as familiar with it uh as some of you may be, but in my judgment. Uh we can delay some of these. You see some on the right side of this slide. Uh that were proposals that didn't make it into the CNR uh request that you're seeing in the proposed budget. So um keep an eye on this in- information and uh if you have questions. Uh about, you know, why these didn't make it in or or if you have any uh i- i- input on how they maybe should be getting to. To your amended budget as it moves forward, please let us know. Next slide. So uh I I know we have a lot of time in workshops, uh I I want to kind of set the stage at a high level on some of the things that we've been working on together, the board. Uh and the and the manager's office. Uh we've had some public meetings about a number of the things that we're gonna put up here for you to just keep in the back of your mind as you. Move forward. The first one is the the SVAA. Um as everybody knows, we uh had uh at the tri-board or bi-board meeting, we had the presentation from them. Uh at this board's request, uh my office, I I put out a a a letter to SVAA asking for some further information. Uh in order to uh, I guess, justify or support their request. Uh and uh their request, uh for those of you don't recall, was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh in order to uh just maintain uh the uh uh SVAA. Uh there were a lot of discussion points around the sustainability of the volunteer model uh in the first place. Uh and uh as I think some of you know, this is not a a challenge. The challenges faced by SVAA are not unique to Simsbury. It is a problem that the entire country and municipalities around the nation are wrestling with. So what did we do in this budget? We did put a placeholder in for two hundred thousand to support the SVAA in a transition period. This is, I think, and my words, not theirs. We see it as a transition period, not necessarily a change in in how we do provide the service. But certainly, there need to be some changes, at least in my view, in in how how the business model continues to conduct itself in the current economic climate and against the backdrop of their realities in terms of the reimbursement rates that are authorized by higher levels of government. So what we're proposing in this budget, and again, a hundred and fifty thousand was funded last year. That was ARPA. Again, remember, ARPA is gone. So this is one of the, just two or three examples of something that does transition to our pockets as ARPA gets exhausted. The proposal is if you approve the two hundred thousand, we will work with SVAA to carve a a contractual, a stronger memorandum of understanding agreement with them that addresses the concerns that have been raised to this point in our discussion. So we did not have time before we, you know, presented the preliminary budget to begin those negotiations with SVAA and to have those in-depth, detailed conversations with them. It was all we could do to get the back and forth, get as much information as we could. So where are we today? Is is that obviously, we're recommending that we we provide this support subject to those continued, those those, I'll say, negotiations, for lack of a better word at this time. And I'm happy to take questions about this later. The contribution is presented in the community service budget under public agency support. I'm going to, you know, next year, if there is continuing support, I would probably recommend we we move it out of of that budget line and give it its own budget line at some point. Those are things we can talk about later. Next slide. Along the same lines, you know, you know, this is near and dear to my heart as a as a background in theater and public arts. The Simsbury, oh, I'm sorry, the Main Street Partnership first before we get to SIMPAC. You know, economic development was one of the, and we haven't finalized the board's goals and objectives yet. But I think it's fair to say that economic development was coming out, certainly in the top of the list of things that was important to this board. And and so we wrestled during the budget preparation period with, well, what are we going to do to bolster economic development? A lot of different things were suggested. And I'm not saying that there won't be some vibrant discussion around this. But just for tonight's presentation, the proposal is is that we would double the funding roughly from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. Again, we are in a current memorandum of understanding with the Main Street Partnership that expires at the end of June. So we will be beginning discussions about entering into a new MOU. And so we'd ask for budgetary approval to increase funding so that as we have those conversations with Main Street, we're able to have some more skin in the game, even as we ask them to take certain other actions or new actions and expand, take an expanded role, or however we decide to do it. So again, like the the other three or four of these, you're you're really being asked to give us the budgetary authority to craft a stronger relationship that can impact your goal and ours of of economic development. Next slide. And now I got ahead of myself, but on Simsbury, on the performing arts side, a lot of discussions about this. And really, a lot of thought went into this and some of the other capital projects and a lot of discussions around CNR this year. This is a project that, you know, the very good news is that the town was awarded the nine hundred thousand dollar grant from the Bond Commission. It is a a small part, roughly a little less, a little more than a third, I guess, of the total project cost. You'll see on this slide that, you know, the position that we're in and that SIMPAC is in. And a couple of you were on the, joined me on the Zoom call with their executive director and a couple of members of their board. Previously, a budget authorized to three hundred and fifty thousand. And we're asking for an additional five hundred at this time. The key thing to look at here is that this does not, it still does not fully fund the project. And so there need to be conversations had with this board and other decision makers and the town manager's office and the board of of SIMPAC. So what we've done here is we've put essentially a placeholder in, we're asking for budgetary authority, five hundred thousand. It's a it's a hugely important, we think, capital project as as proposed there and ties to the economic development goals and many of the other things that this board has has signaled it wants to prioritize. So what does this do? It tells our friends and colleagues at SIMPAC and the community that we're committed to the project, but we also want to have further discussions with their board about what their fundraising capabilities are, what they can commit to, and how we can have a stronger partnership in terms of getting to the two point seven million. Kind of backed into this number, you know, we weren't going to put the full million in. We weren't going to say we're not doing the project. And we wanted to to make sure that that the commitment that we were making in this budgetary cycle was strong enough to send a message to SIMPAC's funders. And I think this is the important message that that they would want me to send is that the the town of Simsbury has skin in the game. We're with you. We want to see this project completed, but we also want you to help with the, on your own fundraising side, either by doing a capital campaign or something else. Next slide. Flower Bridge Rehabilitation, you know, we're so happy to be able to recommend this additional funding. But again, like we talked about at the top, you know, we've got some issues with the budget that were driven by the revenue decline, the zero grand list growth, all of those issues we talked about. You've also got some key cost overruns. And again, you know, this is something that has to be done. The town is committed to doing it. And you'll see there the proposal to bond for four hundred and ninety five thousand. That that is just, you know, to my mind, a no brainer. We have to get this done. I'm hopeful it's got strong support. But that would be, as presented by this budget, additional bonding in order to 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 pay for that. Next slide. Finally, just before we take a few questions, budget dates. The most important one coming up is the is the big, the workshop on March ninth. You know, we are, staff is is standing by. Our department heads from the biggest departments will be on hand to defend their individual asks, particularly on the CNR side. And we would just ask that if board members have any particularly challenging questions or questions that might require us to to get some historical information or dig up some data, if you'd be so good as to email us, Amy or Melissa or I or Tom, any on the team, those questions in advance, that would be really helpful as we could try to prepare the answers in advance of March ninth. I won't go through all the budget dates. They're in your book and they're also posted online. It's a relatively tight timeline, leading to a budget referendum at the end of April or middle of May, depending on how the review process plays out. So with that, I I want to open it up to some questions. I know we're we're short on time. But just in general terms, I want to thank, at the top, everybody on the staff that worked so hard on this. It was particularly, I think, challenging for them because, you know, they got a new town manager. And so had to educate me on some of the things that I'm not an expert on. Simsbury has done a tremendous job over the years in budgeting. It's a very strong, fiscally strong town, as you all know. And what this budget, as I said in the budget message, what we've tried to do is we've tried to check all the boxes. We fully fund open. We keep, we're maintaining the past practices that that have served you so well, leaving the revenues untouched and and really projecting them, by my my estimation anyway, quite conservative. You'll see some comments about that in my budget message, I think. But again, the main driver of the tax increase is the lack of grand list growth coming at a time where, you know, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about development, what type of development, how much development, and so on. And also that motor vehicle, the loss of that motor vehicle. I will say that, and you know, maybe the only piece of editorializing is is that if you are going to underestimate revenues because you want to be conservative, I get it, if you do that, serves you well most of the time. It assures that you're going to have a a surplus in any given year. And that builds your reserves. The question that's framed, I think, one of the key questions that the budget frames is, you know, at what point do you start to use reserves? And how do you use them? You know, what are you going to do as approvers and the legislative body as you look at the landscape that we've presented this budget to? My own view, for what it's worth, is is that reserves are there to be used in times of need and that, you know, a reasonable and strategic use of reserves is called for when you've got zero grand list growth and a sudden decline in revenue of a million and a half dollars. I guess I would say, and I come from cities that don't have the reserves that that Simsbury does, I would say that you you need to take a look at how you can help reduce that tax increase without cutting some of the expenses that we've put in there. I'll close just by, just off the top of my head, just a few of the things that we have asked for on the operating side. They're more fully described in the budget message, which is on page four in the budget book. You know, we were asking for your support to upgrade our personnel division. Essentially, human resources in the town is is handled by one individual. And there is no other point, I think, within the organization, that one point of of common failure that you would, you know, if you break that string, everything else starts to go. So from an organizational perspective, as I came in as the new town manager, you know, I look at things in concentric circles and widen the look as as we get things closest to the sun fixed, right? And looking at our current management of of how we service our internal stakeholders, our employees, and how we struggle with timeliness sometimes on mandated reporting. And the growing risks in the HR field, one of the asks on the operating side is that we take a coordinator position, create a department, make it a department head, and give it, you know, one full-time employee. And, you know, what we're looking for very simply is promote one individual, elevate HR to the function that it is, from a personnel function to a department head, for all the reasons we can discuss during the the budget review process. But we're asking for one full-time employee. And it's an example of what we've asked for in that same paragraph in the budget message, a few positions, how important the asks are. The asks are so important that we have to make them even when we have zero grand list growth and we lost a million five. And and, you know, so where we are is because these things were not done previously, we are now at a point where they have to be done when they frankly probably should have been done before. There's a couple of other positions that we're asking for that are all just as important. I think there's three, maybe four altogether. One thing we did struggle with, I know, and I'll just comment briefly on, that your board entertained a presentation by the police commission a couple of weeks ago, at which they asked for two records clerks, my own analysis and having conversations with the chief. My budget recommends one. You know, the issue here is, do you ask for two and hope to get one? I can tell you, I can assure you that that was not what was done here. They they can, they convinced me that the work is there to justify two. It is there. And if we weren't facing the challenges that we were, I would be asking for two. But this is an example of where, you know, we even even on the operating side, we we know we've got to tighten our belts, we want to do our part. And so the the recommended budget is is that we give them one. The other thing we did is I think we're we're asking for a auto mechanic and a driver. This was a request that didn't make it last year. So it's the second year that the Department of Public Works has advocated for that. And we realize, again, it's not, you know, it's never the right time. You had had positions that the fringe and other things, very expensive. What we're proposing is, and we've asked for funding approval for half a year, we'll slow walk the hire a little bit, and that cuts the expense by half. But what we can't do is say, we're not going to put it in and we're going to hope that it gets approved this time next year for, and we'd hire him in July at twenty five. We can't make it that long. Because as I said in the budget message, it's it's mission critical at this point. So I thought it was important to show you a slide of what we didn't put in. I thought it was important to let you know that that in my view, and I've been budgeting for a number of years now in in multiple cities, this is a revenue side issue, not a not really an expense side issue. And for that reason, we're hopeful that we don't spend a lot of time going through each individual line or or each individual proposed CNR project, particularly if they're less than, you know, ten or twenty grand. I'd encourage you to come up with a threshold below which you agree. It's de minimis. Let's move on. I think some departments and divisions, if you look at the budget carefully, you'll see they're relatively flat. So I'm not inviting them to attend, frankly. If you've got questions on those smaller division issues, just let us know and we'll we'll be quickly responsive. But I really want to encourage the board to focus on the on the the big four departments, the big revenue drivers and what we can do to mitigate the tax increase. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for listening. I'll take some questions if there are any.
Thank you. I'd like to see what kind of questions people want to ask tonight. We're going to be getting on a good first. Heather, you.
Actually, I I do not appreciate getting this today. You know, I think the majority of my questions will come during the workshop when I can get a little more nitty gritty, I think, two hundred and something.
Two hundred and forty pages of.
Is that how?
Yeah, I think so.
I really, yeah.
I will just say that one of the things we're we're asking you to fund is is our acquisition of ClearDove, and and some of you have been advocating for that and it's seen here. So what we're we're doing is, again, a transition year. If we, if if that's approved, then we can acquire that software. Next year, at this time, the budget process becomes a little easier and in fact, more transparent and there's just easier to manage. So that's a cool thing that's in there. It's not a lot of money.
So I do have a question. What is your reasoning with taking the grant writer out? Wouldn't that's something that could save us a lot of money?
Appreciate that question. So, you know, when I first came in, you know, again, as I said, concentric circles. Let's look at the things that are closest to the sun and that can drive revenue. Immediately, we see we've got a revenue problem. The the answer to that is, you know, at least to me, grant writer, get a grant writer. Over the ensuing weeks, I came to understand, and you know, really can 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 thank staff for this and a couple of conversations I had with others, is that you could achieve this by contracting out. And in those situations, what happens is the grant writer's fee is paid out of the grant. It's not, it's not ideal because you have less grant to do your project, right? And so we see, we've had an example tonight of where a grant wasn't enough and we had to go back and apply for another grant. We see it with SIMPAC, got a great grant for nine hundred grand, but where do we come up with the rest of the money? So that, you know, there are challenges with this. But the answer to your question is that we had to cut somewhere. And, you know, it is, it is critical that the few positions we've asked for are approved to to, they're not even enhancements. You know, the past practice has been to go to the board and include in the budget book in, you know, a specific form, enhancement request. I said, no, these these are not enhancements. I need the board to understand that this is to hold the line. We're not enhancing anything. I've got piles of boxes and work that isn't getting done. And our police chief stood right here and told you the same thing with respect to the records clerk. So I can tell you, you know, with great assurance, that that that's got to be the priority, especially if we can go out and get the grant writer under some other mechanism. But I want to assure you that increasing grant revenue is a number one priority of all of us. And, you know, we've got some good people here that do, as you saw, a lot of good work on grants. So one of the ideas I liked about the grant writer was sharing that person with some of our external partners. I thought that was pretty cool, but we just can't get there today.
I have a question, going back to SVAA.
Yep.
And I know we can talk about this more on on the ninth. But I I just kind of want to put it out that, you know, we're we're, you're suggesting we fund two hundred thousand dollars and they're looking, you know, the ask was for two hundred and twenty eight thousand. Where is that twenty eight thousand gap supposed to be made up for? Is it behoven on SVAA? Is it behoven on SVAA to raise that 28,000? I just want to be clear for.
So not, good question. So not necessarily. I think what we found in reviewing the answers to the question and what limited financial information they did give us, that there were still a couple of unanswered questions. And so we're signaling a willingness to fund, at least if you look at their ask of 228 and take it, you know, make it a monthly ask, for example, the 200 is going to get us far enough in the year even by what they're asking. What we need is more time to work out that MOU. And in fact, I had a conversation with the town attorney about this recently and he's in agreement that really what the town needs to look for is a contract, not an MOU. You know, we had an MOU that was put in front of SVAA that had some teeth and their board rejected it, as I understand it, before I became town manager. And what ultimately was signed, I have to agree, has really no teeth whatsoever, I think. It's really just a few pieces of paper that don't give us as a town any assurances of anything or any even limited control or oversight. And again, just to be clear, I know there was discussion in the past about, you know, do we want, you know, put members on the board and everything? I am not proposing that at all. What we're proposing is give us budgetary approval to get us through that renegotiation, the contract. Let us have time, a few months, to talk about the PSA. What happens if it turns out that it's not a sustainable organization? Their projections were that if we maintain level funding for a number of years, that, you know, everything's going to be fine. And maybe it is. I'm not to stand up here and say that it isn't, but they haven't convinced me that it will be. And so I can't recommend, you know, A, the full 228. It's interesting because the Main Street Partnership only asked for 50. And we were, you know, the town manager's office said, well, why aren't you asking for more? I find it curious that, you know, you're only asking for the minimum. And the answer was, well, that's the most we thought we could get. I said, well, you know, that maybe was true in the past, but I think we need to talk about potentially more from them. Same thing is true with SVAA. They really have to demonstrate to us and to the Board of Selectmen particularly, to your satisfaction, that it's a sustainable model. And I should just say, if we have to come back for a supplemental and I'm standing here in eight months asking for more money, it will be because I know what I'm talking about and I have satisfied myself that this is needed and it will result in some long-term survivability of the organization. But fundamentally, I'm not there yet. So what you see is 200.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that, so that people know that public safety is something that is important to us as a board and as a town manager and this is in no way reflection of trying to skimp on public safety in any way. And we know that ambulance service is important to our town and so I just want to make it clear in, you know, in this meeting right now.
I appreciate that. I think when you look at capital planning, you look at typically five, six years out, you would do the same with this, even though it's not a capital expense. We need to satisfy ourselves that we know what we're going to be asked for if we're going to be continuing to fund them. It was 150 last year. They're asking for 228 this year. Does that mean it's 350 the following year and 600? So just like we would with capital planning, we need to take a look at what the long-term numbers are. And thanks for that question.
One more follow-up, just on the Main Street, I think the doubling, will there be like some form of accountability for what we're getting for that additional 50,000?
Yeah, if you can imagine, great question. If you can imagine us sitting down to renegotiate an MOU with them and all we have is the budgetary approval to do what we've done in the past, you're not setting up your town manager to have the conversations that go to that point, Curtis. What more? And I don't know what those are because we haven't had time. So there is an element of, in my preliminary budget, of asking for some, a vote of confidence, if you will, that we're not dispersing this money until we reach that agreement, right? So if the ask was for 50 or 55,000, you're giving us budgetary approval for 100, you're really just arming us as a community to have those conversations. What more could we do together in partnership, no pun intended, with them? And what can we do to hold them more accountable for? And I think a lot of this is just communication. And I think across the spectrum, a number of areas where there just hasn't been the best communication for whatever reason. And those are opportunities, as we can overcome. But thank you for that question. And I shouldn't use the word doubling because it sounds like it's a lot of money. As a percentage of our budget, the extra 50,000, you know, some of you might very well look at the budget book and say, well, if economic development is one of our biggest goals and you're only adding 50,000 to it, I mean, you know, you could also frame it that way. So again, I'm totally willing to come back if we've got them to a place where we think and they can justify, you can get more with more. Then again, you know, my position is to bring that to you for your consideration at some point and hopefully we'll get there.
I want to, I have questions, but I want to see if Kevin, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I appreciated the summary of all the agency requests as well. And your chart that showed the potential projects that you deferred or are not going to do and we talked about one, do you have dollar figures already attached to those? And it'd be helpful to at least see what that might look like.
We do.
And just in our discussion, even though we might not fund them, that'd be helpful for me. That's all for now. Thank you.
We'll get them.
Sure. Questions? Steve, any questions?
No, I look forward to it. I may just drill down, but from the scenario view, I have none of those studies.
So I have a couple of questions, of course. And one question I'm going to ask, just as, you know, from both the Board of Ed and Board of Finance position, if somebody could remind us or where the Board of Finance is, our friends, as far as the guidance goes and how far off we are from that.
So I'll defer to Amy on this, but I'll just give you the general answer that with respect to our debt service, we're okay. With respect to our fund balance, our general fund balance, I think I saw a slide somewhere where we were, you know, with the reserves from the surplus from last year, probably going to be a 20-plus million or something. But I'll defer to the experts on that. I think we are within guidance in terms of some key areas. Are we off the rails anywhere, Amy?
Um, from, well, from some of the policies, but I think Wendy's referring to the percentage.
Yeah.
So it's supposed to be about 1.75 budget increase and then the tax increase overall is supposed to be around 3%. So we're way off.
Yeah, I thought it was a cola. That's what I was trying to remember.
I misunderstood. I thought by guidance, I mean policies set by the board, which are fund balance policies and other things, we are within those rails. And one of the other things, and I think it was made clear to me when I first started, that, you know, certain things are sank or sank, particularly with respect to the conservative budgeting of revenue, right? So this budget checks that box in terms of meeting the challenge to not increase revenues to meet the increased expenses. So, you know, from my perspective, particularly having budgeted in other communities, you know, there's a lot more attention paid to individual revenue lines. You don't just budget the expense side and say, oh, by the way, you know, you're not going to touch these. But that's what we did. Again, wanted to be respectful of the process.
I have a couple of other questions. So one thing, you guys can figure this out after, but, and I know you mentioned that we'll all have questions. So if you guys want to figure out a good way to process questions from all of us and then to throw it back out at us, so you guys aren't just sending stuff back and forth, I'm sure that will work itself out. One thing that I'm going to bring up is Amy has, it used to be called the Levy Cow, now it's called the Budget Modeling Tool. But it's a, it's a, what, pretty much the budget in Excel format. And it would help, say like Kevin, if you wanted to see what it would add to the budget if you added a sustainability coordinator or something like that. So it gives you kind of hands-on access to the numbers. So that is something I believe we're going to have
We'll get it to you.
our hands on once we get into that. And it's really, if you're good in Excel and you know what you're doing, it's a good tool to kind of see what your changes and your thinking would alter. And I just wanted to call this out to everybody that's on this board and Heather and I have been through the budget before, but in the past, our budgets used to come to us with, Mark is giving us all his recommendations and he's, we're basically going to be the ones who are going to have to pull back on everything and say, we, you know, we can't take a 7.8% tax increase and we're going to have to find ways to cut that. Whereas before, we were the ones adding those things back in, so.
Puts the onus on us, doesn't it?
It does. But to be honest, I kind of like it because it's clean. It tells us this is what we need as a town and it's really up to us to figure out what we can stomach and the residents can handle. So I think that was, I thought that was a really good presentation. It was really clean cut.
Thanks.
You've just gone through this in Poughkeepsie, right?
Right.
It's old hat.
Yeah, and if you can live there and then do the budget, you're okay here. To your earlier point, if, just to be clear, if any one of you ask us a question, we'll be sure to get you your response, but we'll copy the entire board. So you don't have to second guess whether, you know, you asked this question or that. We'll make sure everybody's on the distribution list. But in terms of the best, what we would ask for is direct your questions to the finance director, to Amy. Feel free to copy me in case I, you know, Amy's got all the answers with Melissa, but I will maybe chime in every now and then if I have to, yeah, so.
So the slide, going back to the one of the stuff that you had pulled out that weren't going to go, could you provide us then approximate numbers of what they would cost so we know either to look at?
Yep.
Is that what Kevin asked?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. You're saying it better.
Because I was also, yeah, thinking not just for this year to see if we want to allocate something back in, but also so we, you know, looking at what next year and the following year is going to be and we can look at three, you know, two, three, five-year plans.
A second.
Thank you, Kevin. Sorry, I had a moment, apparently. I was like, Kevin's talking sewn out.
One of the things I found, you know, I think most challenging for me, you know, having just got here, was that, you know, I didn't have that historical perspective of what had been presented or not presented before. So, you know, I would go back and look at the budget cycles and say, well, you know, the Board of Finance nixed this or you've nixed that. But if it didn't make it beyond the town manager's office, there really isn't a record that I could easily put my hands on. So this is more, you know, for looking back than necessarily looking forward. But, you know, the sustainability coordinator and maybe, you know, one of the others, something that you want to add, I think we need to present that option to you. Hopefully you won't cut one of the other asks to put it back in, but it's your choice, right? So it's not ours. If we don't give it to you, you don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So now, now we're going to move into executive session. We have two executive sessions. I need to know, Tom, who we're moving into the executive sessions with?
The first one is D. And the second one would be.
Okay. Do we, can I do that? Can do them both together? Do we need to go in and out and in and out? I can't remember.
You know, I don't know the answer to that.
I'd be willing to move us into executive session and then we can invite the outside participants, you know, or whatever. That's my.
Yeah, that's, that sounds good to me. Thank you for that. So we're going to move into executive session for Section A. Pending litigation with Bob D, the town manager. Is it just you? Is Tom Fitzgerald staying?
He is staying, yes. Yeah, he's just going to shut that door.
Okay.
And can I ask for a short recess for like one minute?
Oh, yeah, we're going to have a recess once we get in there. Because I'm getting water. Bob D, on Section A, for the discussion of pending litigation and executive session for the discussion of client memo with the town manager, Tom Fitzgerald and Mike Carrington. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. So could I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, you got a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we are now in executive session.